So moved.
Okay, maybe a second. Okay, thank you. One thing that we want to tell you is that we are going to pull off personnel changes because Jean has some updated information for that. And Kristin Hubert is here tonight to help us go through the interim report on the Edmentum diagnostic results. So that's all good stuff. I don't believe there's anything to add or subtract from the agenda. So all of those that approve the agenda, please hit the little green button or wave at me.
Yes.
Okay. Hi Becky. Hi there little one. I just need, Mike, I don't see you or Kevin. Kevin? Perfect. Okay, thank you. All right, so we do have an agenda. Thank you for that. Let's see, the next piece was board meeting evaluation results from our October 21st meeting. That should say October 21, not 23rd, sorry. So I got six or seven results back. I wanted to let you know that for the most part, everyone felt that we are yes or sometimes doing everything. For all the questions, there was one person who said no to everything. There was some comments that I'll share with you, which was under the question, does the board follow the agenda and timeline set in the agenda? The comment was we used to. Actually, two people said that. And under the question, do board members arrive at meetings prepared to discuss the agenda items? The comment was some do, some don't. And then, let's see, if there was there was some topics that people would like to see the board explore, which was restorative justice and anti-racism. And then, the other question was, does the board focus its work on the vision and future of the district? The comment was, it's been harder lately, lots of disruptions. So we will do another self-evaluation tonight, which will actually be a Google Doc form that you will fill out after the meeting. So I don't know if anybody wants to comment or anything on the self-evaluations, but for the most part, I think they're good. We just need to I need to be better about making sure that we follow the agenda. And there's obviously a couple of things that people would like to talk about. I think restorative justice is a really good one to talk about at some point, and how we can, as a board, help that along. Any comments or questions? Barbara, yes?
I just wanted to clarify, the proper way to go about filling out the Google Doc is you make a copy and then you fill it out, is that correct? And then send it in?
That's a good question. Because I don't know, because I didn't make the Google Doc. So Jean, is it supposed to be, you make a copy and send it in, or do you just submit it?
For tonight, I turned it into a Google form, a Google survey, so you don't have to worry about any of that. It'll just be your result that goes straight to Lori, and you don't have to worry about the copy or any of that.
No copy, no nothing, okay.
Okay, great, because I noticed I started making changes in the original, and I made like one tiny little change, and then I saw Jean, you'd like approved it, and it was like, delete this S, and I was like, oh, I'm doing something wrong, because I didn't mean it to, you know.
Well, interestingly, you were also making comments on something somebody else had put in there. So I, for people who accidentally used it, I made a copy and put theirs on their own form and sent it to Lori, and then I was accepting to clear off the form, but anyway, we won't have that happen again.
Okay, great, thank you.
And Lori, Derek just joined us.
Hi Derek. Thanks for joining us. We have an approval of an agenda. I just went over the board self-evaluation results from our last meeting. And so I'll just tell you that someone wanted to explore the restorative justice program and how we can help from the board perspective. So if that's what the board would like, you guys can add it to your self-evaluation tonight, just so that I know that we don't like to do that. And for the most part, we're doing okay as a board. We just need to stay on track. I think that's pretty much what I saw. So, next subject, boards' let's talk communication report, or communications of parent citizens and staff. I don't believe we have anybody here other than board members and staff members. So I have not received any let's talk communication reports, but I will tell you that October was Principal's Month. I didn't even know that thing existed, but so on behalf of the board, I sent all of the principals a card. Along with, well, maybe she doesn't have it yet, but I sent one to Jean too, because I had eight cards. And I sent one to Brenda Fleming and just said, you know, what's all this stuff about principals? What about those financial people? Anyway, so I did do that.
Thank you for doing that, Lori.
Yeah, no problem. So I'm happy to do that.
For getting it.
So consent agenda. We are pulling off personnel changes. Is there anything else, anybody else would like to pull off before we move forward? Not seeing anybody say anything, so all of those that approve the consent agenda minus the personnel changes, please press your green button, or please press the red one.
We don't have a motion yet, sorry.
Oh, sorry, you're right, I don't. Can someone make the motion so that then we can vote on it?
I move we accept the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you Becky. Okay, all of those that approve, please press the green button, and those that do not, please press the red one. Okay. Perfect. Thank you very much. That is approved. Personnel changes. I will turn it over to you, Jean.
So the consent agenda tells you that the nurse at Otter Creek Academy Leicester School has resigned already. However, we got right on it, and I'd like to add to that agenda to hire Zoshia Livingstone Peters, who is an RN, who lives in Salisbury and is interested in being a school nurse.
Okay, someone want to make a motion? Still moved.
Well, Derek also raised his hand, so Derek, second.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, any discussion regarding personnel changes?
Lori?
Yes?
Just a question. Jean, is that Z O S H I A?
It's actually Z O S H A. Livingstone with an E at the end, hyphen Peters.
Thank you.
Any discussion from any board members? Greg, you have your hand up.
Yeah, Jean, the nurse leaving already, is that indicative of the craziness of COVID and our schools? And I mean, it's so quick.
It is, it is quick, but it was a personal issue that caused her to leave. Whether or not that played into it, I have no way of knowing.
I was just curious.
Yeah.
Thanks Greg. Anyone else? Okay, then all those in favor of the personnel changes, please signify by pressing your little green button, or press the red one if you do not agree. I just need Mike and Barry. Thank you, and thank you. Okay, passage unanimously. Thanks very much. Next topic is our board professional development. There's future professional development focus, which is the LGBTQ, which we plan for, we are planning it for January. We wanted to let you guys know that, unless you want to focus somewhere else.
That topic, those two topics, the anti-racism and LGBTQ were chosen in
August.
At the August retreat, so this is the chance to change that direction.
Right. I don't see anybody raising their hand or making any changes, so we will go ahead and set that up for January. November, we're going to be continuing our anti-racism discussions, and in December, we're probably going to be focused pretty much heavily on budget for both of our meetings. So that's why this is being pushed to January. Barstow Board Virtual Training on Policy Governance is November 17th at 6 o'clock. So that's on Zoom, I'm assuming?
It is on Zoom. I'll share the link when I have it. This is something they did last year and this year, is they're recruiting board members. It's like way in advance of people thinking about running. It's a nice, they're doing it themselves. It was written by the board, and it's on how they use policy governance. So they asked to offer to share it with anyone here interested.
So if you have an inclination and have the time, I would suggest that you check that out.
Or if you have anyone interested in running for the board who wants to know a little bit more about it, pass it on. I'll get the link out to you as soon as I have it.
What was the date?
November 17.
On your agenda too.
Yep. Derek, go ahead. Oh, Derek, you're muted. Hold on a minute. Maybe I can unmute him.
I got, I got it here.
There you go, okay.
There, there you go. Question about Barstow and policy governance. Have they managed to do any modifications of any of their policies yet? I think there was one instance that it would
Yes, I think they've, well, they and you modified your global ins policies altogether. They just modified their global ins policy one more time to include the word equity in it, because that was, as you discussed, they wanted a report on different equitable factors, and so they put that right in their policy. They just finished that. It might be going to second reading, actually. And they are, they have another policy that they just reviewed that they're going to look at. RNESU is also in the process of modifying a policy.
In, in the attempt at consistency, are those policy changes, or can those policy changes be shared with us?
Sure.
If relevant, you know, we should, we should try and align ourselves for clarity, I think.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And you just made me think, RNESU doesn't really have a report out time on here, and that might be something to think about as well. But I can share with you what they did with, or what they're in the process of doing with their, putting equity in the global ends. And I'll just make that a common practice of sharing it with you.
Thank you.
And yours with them, just so that you're aware.
That'd be helpful. Sometimes it's, it's good to see some models to help us.
Okay. So Kristin Hubert is here with us to talk, to give us a report on the interim report on the Edmentum diagnostic results. So Kristin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, and I think that you all have a couple of documents in your packet. One of the documents is basically an overview of what Edmentum Exact Path is, FAQs. And then there's three separate individual reports that are the OBU English Language Arts, Reading and Math Diagnostic Scores for this first screener. So when, so basically, we purchased Edmentum at the end of August as a way to support our accountability system with regards to assessment. And also, especially important right now with COVID and remote, remote learning and role enclosures, it's a way to help us really keep tabs and progress on how our students are doing, really across settings, whether they're in-person, remote, or in some of hybrid. So when we think about it, Edmentum is the parent company that lives up here. But when we talk about the specific assessments, we talk about Exact Path, which is the set of programs and assessments that make up the diagnostic. And then we talk about learning path, which is what a student gets put into based on their diagnostic screener. And then down the road, when we kind of circle back around to Edmentum, check in with you all, we'll be talking about something that's called Study Island, but we haven't even gotten to Study Island at this point, so don't be worried about that. But so we're using an online learning program from Edmentum that's called Exact Path. And what it allows us to do is personalize learning across K to 12. It's not pre-K, but we are using it as young as kindergarten and as old as seniors in high school. And it allows us to do that for all of those grades in reading, language arts and math. And what Exact Path does is it starts by targeting each student's academic strengths and also their challenges with a computer adaptive assessment. So it really fits the bill, especially for students that are learning remotely. But it prescribes basically a tailored playlist of lessons, practice, short quizzes at students' independent learning level. And as we get rolling into the year, our diagnostics, that big benchmark screener happens three times a year now, basically January and then March, April, May. We haven't really decided on when we'll do that third, that third diagnostic screening. But so based on how a student is progressing, and also their diagnostic screener, that's what rolls out and indicates a student's learning path, which is that, like I said, tailored playlist of lessons, practice, and then short quizzes or progress monitoring checks at a student's independent learning level. So not necessarily at a grade level expectation, or like a content proficiency, but it meets students where they're at. The good news too about Exact Path is parents can check on it at home, students can check on it at home. On our remote asynchronous Wednesdays, students are assigned a variety of skills and activities via their learning path in Exact Path. And so it allows students and parents to monitor their progress each step of the way. And it also allows teachers to log on and see what individual students are doing, and also what their entire class is doing. So students are using this program at school, but many of them also continue learning at home. And it's a really easy Google username, password login, so students don't have another password or username to think about. And so like I said, we do these diagnostic screeners three times a year. Every student takes it in ELA, reading and math. It's about 30 minutes per content area, and then based on the results of those diagnostic screeners, students are put into individual working paths. And so if you were to look at the pieces of information that I shared that look like, basically, the, you know, the visual, you can see the diagnostic trends over at the OBU level, and also at the building level, in English Language Arts, in reading and also math. So if we, for instance, look at reading, and you just look at the all students being assessed across the grade level, so for OBU, that's K to 12, it shows you that we still have some students who are taking the test, because we had to open the window a little bit longer. We were struggling a little bit getting high school students to take the test, because, you know, it's just not as easy with students who have a home room at the elementary level as it is with students at the high school level. And also Otter Valley's hybrid setup made it a little bit more challenging, but we're really close to getting there. But so when we look at the first diagnostic, when you look at that visual, you'll see the overall district trends. And you'll see on one bar, the number of students that are at the 0 to 24 percentile, 25th to 49th, 50th to 74th, and then 75th to 99th. And then again, you can drill down to the individual school level and kind of see that. Right now, what we hope for, for students testing this first diagnostic, is to be somewhere around the 25th percentile. Because what the diagnostic screener is, it's a nationally normed assessment, and it is testing students against end-of-the-year standards. So for instance, if I'm a fifth grader, and I'm taking this assessment right now in October of 2020, I am taking the test, my norm, the norm group, when being assessed against our, our fifth graders previously after a full year of instruction. And consequently, these are fifth graders pre-COVID, right? So when we look at our scores, that we are actually doing really well. So any student that's at that, right around the 25th percentile, the growth rate, the trajectory suggests that they will be right around the 50th percentile or higher at the end of the year. So that percentile is not 50, you know, I've learned 50% of the information I need to learn at that grade level. It's that I'm basically scoring around average of my nationally normed peers. So when we look at our overall district trends, we really are doing really well. We have a lot of students actually who are well above the 25th percentile, you know, some that are even at the 75th to 99th, which is way further than we even, you know, would hope they would be in, say, May of this year. So when we come back for an Edmentum report, a follow-up, you'll see the first diagnostic and be able to see the growth rate to the second diagnostic, and then ultimately the third diagnostic. So that holds true for reading, ELA and math. So that, that was a lot. I definitely don't need to read through the FAQs for you, but what sort of questions might you have that I could answer, or comments or concerns?
How much time are the students expected to spend on the learning tasks? You know, once they've had the test and weaknesses are assessed and everything, how much time will they be spending to find those weaknesses?
So it's different depending on the student and what their program looks like. So what we say to our administrators and our teachers, and what Edmentum says, is that they really want students to be engaging in their learning path for at least 30 minutes one time, one time a week. And that learning path would be specifically for the learning path that they were struggling the most in. So they wouldn't necessarily have to log on and do every week, reading, math, ELA. They might switch it up week to week. Now, that being said, that's just what students are doing independently. Students who are receiving intervention, students whose teachers are using it as a part of their instruction and formative assessment, which we do have a lot of teachers that are using it that way, students log on more frequently than that. And special education students as well, because like I said, the learning path, the good news is that the learning path really is this tailored sort of playlist that is lessons, practice and progress monitoring checks. It's pretty engaging, it's pretty visual, so some teachers are using it far more than basically the minimum that we've established.
Greg, you had a question?
Yeah, is this assessment the only assessment we do now?
I wish, no. No, yeah, no, not even close. So this assessment is basically, it, it isn't really, it didn't really take anything off anybody's plate. We had a lot of hodgepodge sort of remote computer assess, computer adaptive assessments all over the place. So what this does is put one K to 12 system in. We still do SBAK, NAPs, all of our national tests, and we still do all of our curricular-based measures.
The reason I was just asking is, you know, those other assessments you named are more for the school to know how we're doing? This seems very, very important for the, for the child to know how they're doing and to improve. How do we communicate with the children to take it very seriously? And, you know, I know that these other assessments, sometimes the kids don't take them. So do we get 100%, is it mandatory?
So that's, that's a really great question. So I would say K to 8. Anyone who isn't, hasn't taken it and basically taken it seriously, like in air quotes, is a new student, someone who was sick, something that kind of fell through the crack. We can even look at the diagnostic screener and see that a student, for instance, timed out, right, they were struggling too much. So we go back and we sit down with them. We can tell if a student is scoring too quickly, right? They, they spent three minutes on a test that should take 30 minutes, and so we can reset the diagnostic. So K to 8, we have a really, really good handle on. The teachers are using it, the kids are using it. You know, we're, it's still new enough that we're figuring out how we make it a little bit more meaningful, especially on asynchronous Wednesdays right now. But we're feeling pretty good about it at that level. Nine to 12, I will admit, is a struggle. It has been a struggle. It will probably continue to be a struggle for a little window of time. But we did, at the end of last week, just have a full faculty meeting with the Edmentum trainers, really basically trying to go through and problem solve, you know, how do we, how do we make this work for nine to 12? How do we, if students aren't in an English Language Arts class, how do we get this English Language Arts assessment to be meaningful? Who's keeping track of it? What are we doing? So we did a lot of that problem solving, came up with a bunch of questions that we, we basically know we need to, you know, figure out an answer for. And then we do have a meeting scheduled at the end of this week, and again, next Wednesday, with the department heads to really try and figure out that nine to 12. Because just like you said, OBU specifically has a history, and they're not alone. A lot of high schools especially struggle with SBAKs in the state assessments not being valuable, and people not buying into them. And that's unfortunate, because it does help us see as a system how we're doing, but more importantly, it's because federal funds are tied to it, right? We need people to buy into it, because we need the federal funds that are attached to that. So we've been already, we've had some parents ask to opt out, we've had some conversations with kids, and we've talked about, we need this measure for our accountability, but more than that, we need it to know how you're doing in hybrid, right? Like how you're progressing, especially if you have students who are not in an English Language Arts or a math class this term, you know, with regards to COVID slide, we want to know how they did, and we want to know how we can support them too.
Yeah, and, you know, I've always felt like perception is a really important thing for our school, to improve our perception. And that, that, those test scores are part of the perception, and the kids, I don't think they realize it. They don't, they, you know, I was talking to my son about it, and once I told him about it, he's like, oh, I'm going to start telling all my friends, like, we need to take this seriously. We can't, we can't complain about Otter Valley's, you know, perception if we're then not going to take the test or not take the test seriously.
Yeah, and that is actually a really good point, which Jean could certainly talk more about. We had a really phenomenal plan and worked with the state and the OBU admins to do just that, to bring meaning and value to the state assessments last spring, right before COVID hit, right? They were doing all sorts of incentives, trying to basically do that, really talk about the value of the assessment and the perception of the assessment in advisories, and like I said, COVID hit, and no one had to do SBAKs.
Angela, you have a question?
Um, yeah, I was just gonna ask, say a parent feels their their child needs more help in ELA or math, or whatever the third one was, and is not getting, is not getting, or the teacher's not giving the support to do this extra help or testing, can the parent request it?
Oh, sure. And parents, you know, like I said, the good news is this program is a simple Google username login, so all students have access to it, and parents can log on and see. If that is happening specifically in a classroom or for a student, my recommendation would be that that parent reached out to that child's teacher, but then also, you know, followed up with an administrator. That's something that the EST can help problem solve, and especially for students who are needing more than, you know, they're maybe able to access in the course of a day, especially if they're hybrid or remote. A lot of times with just a little bit of attention, we can make this system work for that student. And we have the ability to, like I said, reset diagnostics, but we also have the ability to manipulate a student's individual learning path to support them in a, you know, a bigger, a bigger way. And interventionists in every building, special educators in every building, coaches and my office, all have been trained in how to do just that. So a parent really just has to ask, and, and we can figure it out.
Derek, you have a question?
Yes. You said that the Edmentum is, is a norm, nationally norm-referenced assessment. Uh, yes. Um, you said that the Edmentum is, is a norm, nationally norm-referenced assessment, but you also spoke to embedded lessons and, and how does, can you speak a little bit more about how it's connected to, to uh, the curriculum, or, or is it, is it an embedded curriculum-based assessment as well?
Uh, so, yes. So um, the, the developers, and I think I'm, I'm, I might have had that on the FAQ, but um, Jean made me cut it down to one page, so I maybe had to cut that part out. Um, but basically, the designers of Edmentum follow the common core, right? So the diagnostic screener is based on end-of-grade level, whatever your grade level is, end-of-grade level standards or proficiencies for graduation or exiting of that class every single year. And that follows the core specifically. When a student finishes their diagnostic assessment, whichever diagnostic assessment it is, they're assigned a learning path. And what the learning path does is, in each of those content areas, ELA, which is um, our writing, our speaking, our listening, math, and reading, students are basically assigned a learning path at that lowest common denominator. So at the standard level, um, say in um, you know, in, in reading, a student is struggling with letter sounds, something like that. It would give them skills, practice, and lessons specifically in that targeted area. They might own, so I might be a fourth grader, and I might have one gap in reading that will give me a skill at, say, the first grade level, but as soon as I conquer that, I jump back up to the fourth grade level, and it follows the core specifically. What we have found already is some mismatches in terms of what Edmentum ExactPath says they want a kid's learning path and what we want a kid's learning path to be. And the place that we've seen that mismatch is, not that we disagree with the standard and where ExactPath or Edmentum is saying they want the kid to be at the end of the year, but it's a mismatch for an intervention we're giving a student in the moment. So a specific example is if a student is receiving intervention from one of our interventionists in MTSS and/or specialized instruction from a special educator, sometimes what they're working on with a student in their services is a little bit different. So that's when those people would go in, those educators would go in and manually adjust a student's learning path to match the targeted instruction. And then as soon as they did that, then the lessons, the practices, the progress monitoring quizzes would all adapt with that. Um, but it goes content, standard by standard, skill by skill, and it's a progression. And it's a progression that follows the common core. So it's a curriculum match for us because we, like everybody else, follow the common core.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for Kristen?
Bill has one.
Okay, Bill.
Could you send me um, a copy of the technical manuals on this? What you've described is um, pretty interesting, but it's also very hard to do in the sense that you have to have a single trait going K through twelve, and you have to measure along that, and you have to deviate, and you're trying, you're getting a whole lot of information in a thirty-minute uh, kind of exam. And I'd like to see how they do that. Um, one of the things that you mentioned earlier, which I just think is kind of interesting, is the bottom quartile, it's always gonna be twenty-five percent of the students are gonna be there, and at the top, it's gonna be twenty-five percent in the top quartile, unless you have some external kinds of reasons for that. But um, the interesting thing to me is the diagnostic power and the basic validity of the thing. When you're talking common core, that, that sets a pretty high bar.
Yeah, so I will, I'm happy to send you, I'll send it to Jean. I'm happy to send you the user manuals. I can also send you a recording of one of the trainings. Um, but I would tell you that we did an awful lot of research um, before we purchased Edmentum to find one that was the closest, best match, and gonna support us K to twelve. Um, so we are, we actually feel pretty good about it. That being said, just like I mentioned, we are already finding those anomalies and those mismatches. Um, and we recognize that, just like, say, the SBACK or the old-school kneecaps, that it's, you take it with a grain of salt. It's one student on one day, one moment in time. Uh, but what we really liked about Edmentum is it's also computer adaptive, right? So as a student's progressing, if they are meeting a skill and doing really well, it bumps up the content, right? So it bumps them beyond that. Same thing, if a student's struggling um, with a skill or a concept or a content standard, it drops them down. So that's true even at the diagnostic level. So, like I said, you take it with a grain of salt. No assessment system um, is going to be perfect. We've already found some flaws. Uh, but by and large, in terms of what RNESU and OBU needed, especially this year, we felt pretty good about Edmentum.
Yeah, um, I don't want the administrator's manual. I'm pretty familiar with that, how they structured the things. And um, so what, what I'm really interested in is the technical manual.
Yep. I will send it to you.
Thank you.
Other questions for Kristen? So I have one, seeing that nobody else does. Um, I know you say you feel really good about the, the results that you have here. I guess my question is, is that looking at it, it seems like, especially in elementary school, we have a very large percentage of our kids um, in that first grouping, in that zero to twenty-fourth percentile. And is that normal? It is, I mean, I know that this is supposed to, that it's set for what they're supposed to be learning by the end of the school year. I'm just curious if we should be concerned that there is such a high percentage. Most of these are fifty-one, fifty-two percent. I, that worries me a little bit.
Yeah, so, that's a good question, Lori. So not only are we looking at how our students did against students at the end of their grade level, we're looking at how our students did at the end of their grade level in a non-COVID year. So considering um, the gap and everything that happened for our students last spring, when we, let's be honest, did kind of emergency teaching, and we're trying to figure this out, yeah, by and large, we feel pretty good about our scores. Although I can't drill down right now for you all, um, individual grade levels and classrooms and clusters, we have already done that, and we are doing that with teachers. So basically, the diagnostic has flagged students who are at that level or below that we set. We, so teachers in PLCs with me and the coaches are working through student growth worksheets. So for anyone who came up as below where we would want them right now, they're basically setting growth rates or trend lines, really aim lines, for their students at the end of the year. And if, if students are struggling or below, we are collecting data and referring them for intervention. So, and that's even happening at the high school, which is new for um, OBU, that we are able to gather the information from the diagnostic assessment, and then you compare it to local common measures, right? Because some students just don't test well. Um, we have some students, especially at the high school, who didn't take it seriously. So we are looking at that data, attendance data, classroom data, local common assessment, um, those local CDMs, and comparing it to make our intervention um, cycles. And so that's already happened. Intervention started almost two weeks ago, and teachers, interventionists are using um, ExactPath along with other formative assessment measures uh, to really kind of keep track and keep our eye on those students at that twenty-five, um, twenty-fifth percentile or below. So yeah, there's work to be done, um, but as we were having conversations about it at each school, had their own uh, training, and we were able to dig into classroom and specific data, by and large, we feel good about it and do believe that our students will be where they need to be at the end of the year.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Kevin, you have a question?
Then Kevin, then Derek.
Okay.
Uh, thanks. Um, I guess I'm gonna raise kind of broad-based concern. One is that, um, I wonder if what we're really teaching the kids is to sit in front of a screen and, and to respond to uh, you know, commands from the computer, and it's something that we all spend so much of our lives doing, and I'm, I'm not sure the kids need more of that. Uh, and then, you know, we use the word personalized, and it seems like we're accepting Google's definition of personalization, which is really to transform us into various kinds of data. Um, it seems like the people who would really have personalized information about the kids should be the teachers in the class. So I guess what I would say is that it's a supplemental tool of this might have possibilities, but as, as if we, we turn over our assessment and our kind of understanding of how we understand each child, the system, I think we're playing into the hands of, you know, big data, and uh, and it's very concerning.
So I, I'm not sure I heard a question, um, but I will just respond. Yeah, we are trying to, especially in this crazy world, limit the amount of time that students do spend in front of their screen. But that being said, we recognize, we have a lot of students, actually, um, even at the elementary level, who are still learning remotely from home. We need, we're accountable for those system, students. We need to know what their progress looks like. Um, so having a computer adaptive test, having something that students can do with their screen actually made the most sense for us this year because of everything that we're going through. By and large, the majority of our students are not in front of a screen. Um, that even if they're doing the Edmentum learning path um, assessment, a lot of times they're doing it sitting there with a teacher. Um, so we are absolutely prioritizing um, in-person, face-to-face instruction, assessment, um, hands-on learning as often and wherever possible. So please do not think that this is the priority, um, or, you know, kind of the, the what we're hanging our hat on. Um, that being said, we have a responsibility to assess students constantly, right? Um, that's just not as a summative, at an end of a lesson, an end of a unit, an end of a school year. We need to know so we can adapt and modify our instruction. Yeah, teachers are the holder um, of the majority of that information. Edmentum and ExactPath is just one of the data points or one of the tools that teachers use. Um, I would say if I'm a teacher and I'm concerned about one of my students, and I'm referring them to EST, um, ExactPath is probably just a small snippet of the information that I'm giving you, right? I'm talking to you about how the student is performing in the classroom. I'm using local, um, you know, those CBM sort of measures. I'm giving you anecdotal information. I'm sharing attendance data, right? Like, so I'm doing all of those things. Edmentum and ExactPath doesn't change any of that, and it certainly hasn't shifted our priority. Um, but again, especially now, OBU, RNESU, we needed a common platform that was computer adaptive for our students K to twelve, um, and Edmentum, you know, at, at this point, Edmentum fits the bill the best for us.
Okay, Derek, and then Bonnie.
Yeah, Derek, and then Bonnie, and then just a, a point of order, I guess, the time check.
Okay, well, um, we'll let Derek ask his question, and then Bonnie should ask hers.
Um, I just wanted to make a comment that, that the, um, one of the critical elements of being a professional is being able to move from the state of the art to the state of practice rapidly. And from what I'm hearing, uh, the administrative team um, is acting in a very professional way. And I, and I wanted to commend you folks for, for pulling this together as a tool that you identified as useful under these particular difficult circumstances. And it sounds like it's something that, on an ongoing basis, we'll be able to um, more fine-tune and, and focus on individual student needs. Um, and I wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Bonnie?
All right. Um, I, a comment and a question. My question was if um, as a parent interested in how their child scored, would that be a reach out to the teacher? To try to find out?
Yes, and, and teachers are sharing, going to be sharing this information around parent-teacher conferences and also progress reports, but you can always reach out, because like I said, parents can log on and see just what their students are doing.
Okay, so I saw for the first time today, um, with my second grader, would be my comment. Um, and so first time, but I thought it was great, and I thought, um, the teachers are using it very much to familiarize a seven-year-old with a Chromebook, and if this is to go remote, Lord help me, but um, that he can do it, that he can maneuver around on the Chromebook and, and figure out where he needs to go and how to do next, and his mother should not tell him to hit refresh, because that, that's a bad idea on that program and kind of kicks you back. And so mom should stay out of it, I learned. But um, I, I thought it was interesting seeing it for the first week um, for a seven-year-old and what the assessment was, and, you know, kind of the different choices that they could choose of the topics and, and how it stepped them through. I thought, I thought it was neat.
Good.
Great. Any other questions for Kristen? I, for one, would just say that I'm, I'm looking really forward to um, seeing what the second um, one looks like compared to the first and um, what you will tell us then.
And I, I want to thank Kristen and her curriculum committee as well. Um, we have struggled for a few years of finding these interim diagnostic assessments in different subject areas, at different, we have not been able to um, successfully identify something that's district-wide three times a year. And this is, this is very exciting to me. Like you just pointed out, Lori, we'll really be able to track growth. And it's about the student, not about the system, really. Thank you, Kristen, for joining us. I saw that yawn.
Thank you.
All right, well, we're gonna continue moving on. Um, our next thing is executive limitations. Tonight, we are um, looking at the interpretations for our monitoring report two point two, which is the treatment of staff, and the monitoring report for two point five, which is the emergency superintendent succession. Um, we'll start with two point two. It was in your packet. Um, it's actually after all of the Edmentum assessment data. Um, I'm not sure that we necessarily have to go, these are short, so there's only three, three things that she has interpretations for, um, treatment of staff. Um, the first one is with respect to the treatment of paid and volunteer staff, the superintendent shall not operate without written personnel rules that clarify rules for staff, provide for effective handling of grievances, and protect against wrongful conditions. Her interpretation is that, um, she interprets it to mean that all full-time and part-time employees and volunteers are provided clear job responsibilities to allow them to perform their jobs in a professional manner, including procedures on how to file a complaint or grievance, and how to work with federal or state laws pertaining to employment. Anybody have um, any concerns, questions, clarifying things to ask? Um, or comments regarding her interpretation of this particular policy?
It sounds good to me.
Okay. Anybody else?
Derek?
Yes. I'm here. Um, I guess that, in that first section, um, how does that, in terms of um, personnel rules and, and things like that, um, and treatment of staff, it, it comes to mind that it reflects back on contract language a lot, and, and, and we've got an MOU for, that adjusts some things um, that need, need attention. Um, how do you, how do you see this connected to? I'm thinking of relation, relation building with the faculty and staff.
Well, that's an interesting question. Um, it's a really good question. I, so yeah, the personnel rules, for those who are in a union, we have a master agreement language that covers this. Those who are not, who are non-union, we have a personnel manual that covers this. Um, our volunteers, we have a, kind of a, a smaller expectation for volunteers, and it's very specific what they do. Um, while I don't see that necessarily being a requirement, I, I do do it. I, I brought in a um, labor management committee. I, I brought in a, um, labor management committee to Rutland Northeast, um, which has just been phenomenal, working with, um, actually, I, I have representatives from the Teacher Association, the Parabuzz Driver Association, and the non-union personnel and administration. And there's about 12 of us, and we meet monthly. And the purpose of, and, and we're working with a mediator out of the Federal Mediation Services of Albany, um, which is a free service to us. So that, um, Labor Management Committee has now been in place. It's either a year and a half or two and a half. It's been a while. I think maybe, I think we're coming up on two, two years, maybe. Um, and we meet monthly, and anything that's not a written, i- if it's written, you'd have to go through a grievance process or a negotiation process to change it. But other things that are not written, that deal more with the relationship, is what we discuss on a monthly basis, um, and, and tackle together. And that, that has really been, I really enjoy that. I, I, I strongly urge any superintendent to pull together Labor Management Committee, because it, it's a, it's a nice structured way to allow for those kinds of conversations that can potentially avoid grievances, um, or, or just make some improvements in the district that don't have to go to negotiations, but, you know, different voices are at the table. So I'll include the LMC in the evidence.
Yes, perhaps you could expand on that in your interpretation so that you could use that as a, an example of evidence, right?
Oh, thanks.
Other questions regarding this particular item? Okay. Okay, so number two. Um, superintendent shall not discriminate against any staff member for non-disruptive expression of dissent. Her interpretation is, uh, means the superintendent will ensure that any non-disruptive statement by an employee that indicates disagreement with any decision made by the administration or board will not be discriminated against. Non-disruptive is interpretate, interpretated, interpreted to mean there is no refusal to perform work. There is no encouragement of others not to work. Action does not interfere with instruction or day-to-day operations of a school or the central office. And action is carried out in a professional and respectful manner. Furthermore, the superintendent shall ensure that staff who disagree with an administrative decision shall not experience retaliation from any administrate, any administrator, excuse me, such as dismissal, reassignment to less desirable jobs, or initiation of a formal discipline procedure. Thoughts, comments? I'm not seeing anybody. So everybody's good with her interpretation? No changes, no? Okay, we'll move on. And the last one is that the, the superintendent will, shall not allow staff to be unprepared for emergency situations. The interpretation is that, uh, means the superintendent will ensure that all staff are informed and trained in emergency response procedures. Uh, emergency situations include any condition that threatens the safety and well-being of students and employees. So Jean, would that also include COVID stuff? I mean, that's an emergency situation.
I think so, yes, because we, you know, we did need to provide training on the health screenings, the PPEs. So, um, yes, COVID would be one of my pieces of evidence.
Okay. Um, anybody, uh, I see there, Bill, what, what you got to say? Oh, wait a minute, hold on. I'm going to unmute you. There, go for it.
Do you address licensing in that?
I, I don't. Are you thinking emergency licensing? I don't interpret this to mean licensing. This is about emergency situations, that it threatened the safety and well-being of students and employees. I don't know how licensing would fit into that.
Well, I was just thinking if you weren't there, kind of thing. Or maybe I'm getting two pieces confused.
It might be the next one.
Okay.
If I, the, at least the next one addresses if I'm not there.
Okay.
Okay.
So emergency situations also would refer to fire drills and all of that could.
Fire drills, um, active threats, um, our lockdowns, our evacuations. Um, could refer to VOSHA conditions, violations that occur?
Any questions for Jean? Any, um, anyone not agree with this interpretation of this final item for treatment of staff? I'm not seeing any. Okay, then I look forward to seeing all of your documentation next month for that one. Um, the next monitoring policy that we're going to see next month and that we need to approve the interpretations for is Policy 2.5, which is the Emergency Superintendent Succession Policy. Um, this is a long one, but essentially it says to protect the board from sudden loss of superintendent services, the superintendent shall not permit the administration of council to be unprepared to take over with reasonable proficiency until the successor is found. Um, one thing, uh, to protect the barstow unified. Should this say barstow on it?
No, sorry, no.
Okay.
It's one of those that are very similar, so.
That's okay.
Got it.
Okay, um, so it says to protect the Otter Valley Union School District School Board and superintendent issues and processes, just those should be fewer than two other executives sufficiently familiar with our district, school board, and superintendent issues and processes, um, to enable either or both in combination to take over with reasonable proficiency as an interim successor. Her interpretation says that, um, if for some reason she becomes incapacitated or unexpectedly unable to fulfill the duties of superintendent, uh, then collectively, at least two members of the leadership team, which she identifies as the Director of Support Services, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, and the Businessness Manager or other Otter Valley Unified Principals if needed, and the Executive Assistant to the Superintendent will be prepared and ready to assume and carry out the duties and responsibilities of the superintendent. In addition, um, this policy requires that measures shall be enacted to ensure that at a minimum, the legal, fiscal, executive branch, the leadership team, and human resource functions of the superintendent's office are maintained. All other services within the superintendent's office will be given less priority until a successor is found. So, what's everyone think?
How long has that said?
So in short, it means that I need to make sure that my team is up to speed and ready to step in, if they had to step in, because I win the lottery.
You meet with them on a regular basis, lottery, huh? Okay. You didn't even win the $500 raffle tonight. I don't think we have to.
Yeah, so don't sweat it. Right, we meet on a weekly basis.
All right. I'm not hearing anything from everyone, anyone, so I'm assuming that you're okay with this interpretation and that you're looking forward to hearing all, oh, I see Angela's hand going up.
I think it's a thumb.
Oh, it's a thumb? Oh, that's a thumb. All right, okay. All right, perfect. Then, um, we will see your, uh, data and information next month when we, um, go over that. Perfect.
Okay.
All right, uh, we have a monitoring, monitoring report ourselves to complete, which we, uh, was postponed from our October 7th meeting, um, which is, uh, 4.2 Board Job Description. Um, it is in our packet. It was after, um, it's like page 33 of the 47 pages that was, that was in our board packet. Um, so what I think we need to do, hopefully you may have gone through some of this already, um, prior to the board meeting, but I'm going to print this out so that I can take notes and we can, um, page 33. One second, sorry. I meant to print this out before the board meeting. Okay. Well, we can start with the first one while my computer is printing. The first one, so the Policy 4.2 is about our board job description. So the policy talks about specific job products of the board. As an informed agent of the residents of Brandon, Goshen, Lester, Pittsburgh, Sudbury, and Whiting are those that ensure appropriate organizational performance. The Ovu School Board shall participate with the RNESU Board to hire, negotiate a contract with, and set compensation for the superintendent. So the question is, have we acted consistently with this item of the policy? And the answer, your answer would be either always, most of the time, some of the time, rarely, never. And then, um, if we have a specific, uh, examples to support our response, um, I will tell you that on the RNESU side, since I'm on the RNESU board, we do hire, we do negotiate a contract with Jean every February and, um, set our compensation at that time. And then, of course, we let you all know that we did that. So in this instance, I would think that we always do this, because we always do it every year without fail. Um, if someone disagrees with that, please press the red button. Um, otherwise, I'm, that's what I'm going to say, um, just because I know it happens. Um, and I will put that down as, um, our example. And you could also look at our February RNESU minutes, um, that shows that we did do that. The next one says all boards have direct responsibility to create and maintain the linkage between the residents and the operational organization to represent the informed voices of the residents. This linkage will include seeking input regarding residents' values on issues of ends and ethics, and educating residents on issues impacting the organization.
There's two more in the next slide.
Oh, are there? Before under the same one? Okay, thank you. Reporting to the residents at organizational performance, reporting to the residents on organizational performance, and ensuring residents and other stakeholders that bring non-governing issues to the board understand the process for getting their issue addressed by the system in a courteous and respectful manner. So, question is, do we always do this? Do we do it most of the time, some of the time, rarely, and never? We could also say that, um, I guess we could, um, each bullet could have its own answer to that. Doesn't have to all be the same. I see y'all smiling at me. That's really nice. How about, uh, you know, a comment?
I think they're smiling at the sirens.
Barbara has a question. Thank you, Barbara.
Why do I hear sirens?
Oh, because my son, my son is playing Roblox.
Oh.
On the other computer.
Could he turn it, could he turn it down? Because it's like driving me nuts. I thought I was going insane until Angela said she could hear it too.
Oh, well, I apologize. So I, as a mom, I tune that stuff out.
No worries. I just like really thought I was going crazy, because I'm like, oh, there's an emergency somewhere that's been going on for 45 minutes. This is really bad.
It has been on the computer, so, you know.
Someone really needs to attend to that emergency. Uh, but no, I did not have a, a comment other than that.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
Hopefully Barry has one.
Yeah, Lori, I, I don't know really how to answer this one way or the other.
Okay.
Maybe it would help me at least if we could kind of talk about some examples, perhaps, of if we felt we, we fulfilled this obligation, how did we do so, and maybe when?
Sure, okay. So, um, I'm going to go to Becky, because she's got her hand up and she might be able to answer your question. And then we'll kind of circle back. How's that?
The thing I was thinking about, um, is the example of when we have, you know, the teachers and we invite public for our second meeting and we're doing, um, you know, asking the questions and doing the roundtable work. That, to me, is an example.
Yeah, that's an example. I, I just see a lot of gaps, I think, in, in probably communications between the board and stakeholders. And I don't think it's huge. I, I just think that there's perhaps, you know, misconceptions or misgivings, um, from the stakeholders around what board responsibilities really are. Um, and if we, if we aren't really, um, declaring them or, or kind of pronouncing what we feel they are, then there's, there always seems to be a disconnect.
Okay, well, um.
I think that's an opportunity. I mean, if, if we're saying that, um, we have to create and maintain this linkage of communication, I think that's a huge opportunity for us to do that, because I think that's kind of a void we have.
I actually wrote that down on my thing. I will tell you that, um, Item D, which is talking about, um, when people bring non-governing issues to the board, um, I think we do a very good job of helping them get their questions answered, that we do send them back to the teacher, we send them back to Jean, or wherever they need to go to get their question answered. Um, I usually follow up with those people to make sure that they got their question answered. Um, I'm sure probably most of the rest of you do as well. So I think we do that one well.
I think.
Right, as far as, um, you know, do we go out and do we solicit information from our stakeholders on a regular basis to find out what they're feeling or how they're thinking or? Yeah, we, there are gaps there. I think we can all agree to that. And Derek's not even said, so he agrees too.
Yeah, um, I, I think we struggled with that, um, after the, you know, after the, the work of, uh, the middle school committee or the, the task force that did a lot of that kind of work. We identified as a board that one of our, one of our priorities was this whole idea of connecting with our, uh, constituents, so to speak. And it's an ongoing responsibility, particularly, um, under policy governance, that's, that's what we have to do, is, is stay connected.
Well, if, if I may, um, Derek, I remember only a couple of meetings ago, um, you had made a comment, and I don't really recall where the topic was, but it kind of resounded for me. You would say, we're a policy governance board, that's what we do. And I think you're absolutely right. I mean, I don't disagree with that in any way. And if you look further down through this document, um, I have it in small version here on my phone, so I can't see it all at one time. But further down in this document, it actually speaks to that. And I think we do that very, very well, um, when you look at those responsibilities and obligations. But this whole section here, I think, is one that we really need to spend more time on as a board. Um, I, I look at this and it says, this is a board responsibility. It doesn't say it's a board member's responsibility or an individual's responsibility. It's a board's responsibility as a whole, as a collective group. And I know we do a lot with, um, professional development sessions, and they're great. I, I truly look at those as almost personal development sessions, because I think they are, are kind of individually focused. I would like to see us do more with collective development sessions, um, where the board, um, kind of functions more as a group and as a board. And then perhaps you would have a better sense around, you know, how do we approach the community as a, as a unit? And I'll leave you with that.
Well, how does everyone else feel about that? I mean, you bring up a good point. I mean, that, this is something that we fall down around, that we, I mean, we do talk to the, the constituents, you know, at our annual meeting, which is attended by three people usually other than ourselves, or people that work for us. So we're reaching out to three people as a board and as a group. So the question is, is, is how do we get them to come to us, or how do we go out to them? And it doesn't have to be answered today, but if it's the will of the board, we can somehow, you know, we could have some professional development, not even professional development, we can just have some board time on one of those second meetings of the month to try and figure out how we can go about getting out there more. Is, is, because that's what you would like to see us do, right, Barry?
Yeah, I really think with 13 people, you know, and, and Derek made a good point. On that task, on that task team, there was a lot of ideas and a lot of input. And it was very refreshing to be part of that, quite honestly. But I think as 13 smart people, we could probably come up with a good approach at, at kind of looking at where we might be falling short in this area and, and how we could improve on it. And I think it would be a good board development initiative to kind of focus on that in, in one of our off meetings.
Okay, how does everyone else feel about that?
Jean has her hand up.
Okay.
Thanks, Barbara. Is that okay if I talk?
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So I just wanted to point out that that really was what we brought Allison in for, and she has done a phenomenal job. You have done a phenomenal job over the last year, pre-COVID, of bringing in ambassadors and specifically working towards, as a full board, towards communications as well as a project around your, your buildings. And you know, revi, spending some time to revisit that and say, okay, now COVID's here. Do we just stop? Where do we go from here? That could be a great second meeting topic. Also, I wanted to point out that you invited people in when you redid your ends policy just a year ago this month. And had, and you also went out to things like open houses and, and the Outer Valley Fair and, and put up tables and booths and gathered some input from parents and looked at climate survey results. So those are just all, some more examples that you can add. It's never enough, but you can add those examples to, as well as to what you've done.
Okay, I, and I have done that, so that's good. So I'm going, Barbara, you have your hand up.
Well, yeah, I just want to say that, I mean, I just want to sort of echo that I think it is a good idea to keep exploring how we can do this and how we can fulfill this role as a board, as Barry says. And yeah, I, I think that is essential, as it is written here. It's essential piece of what we do as a board, and we should continue to fine-tune how we do it and explore how to do it better.
Okay, so that's two people, so I gotta know that this is the will of the board, so do I have more help there?
Bill has something to say.
Okay.
Give them a job, something that they're responsible for, that does have some responsibility to it. And that will get the people involved with it. Having too many passing meetings is not going to do it.
So I'm going to go back to what Barry asked. Greg, I see your hand up, so go ahead and, go ahead.
I just had a thumbs up to, to what Barry said. I didn't have.
Okay, okay. So that's three people. Why don't anybody else want to give me a thumbs up that would like to see us spend some time on how to engage our constituency? Okay, see Angela, thank you. Becky, okay?
Bonnie's.
Yep, okay, then we will put that on our list. Probably won't happen until February, honestly, but we can maybe find ways to, to work it in beforehand. Okay. So my question to you is, I've written down all of the examples and then the other evidence that you guys have given. I would like to know how you want to answer the question, is that have we acted consistently with this? And always, most of the time, some of the time, rarely, never? We have not come up with that answer. I don't think the answer is always, but I also don't think it's never or rarely either, so what's your pleasure?
Some of the time.
Okay, so everybody, does everybody else agree with Becky? Thumbs up or?
Yes.
Okay, some of the time. All right, thank you. All right, the next one on our list is number two. It says, "Create and maintain written governing policies that realistically address the broadest levels of all organizational decisions and situations. One, ends organizational outcomes, impacts, benefits, recipients, and their relative worth. What good for what recipients at what cost? B, executive limitations, constraints on executive authority that establish the ethical boundaries within which all executive activity and decisions must take place. C, board, or board management delegation, how power is delegated and its proper use, the superintendent's role, authority, and accountability. And then D, governance process, which is specification of how the board conceived, carries out, and monitors its own tasks." So we obviously have written governing policies. What's your pleasure on this one?
I, I think we're very strong there, Laurie. I really do.
Okay. Do you have any concrete evidence?
Well, like I said earlier, Derek had made the comment, and it kind of stuck with me that we're a policy governance board, and that's what we do. And when I think back to, you know, some of the discussions we've had in recent meetings where we kind of reinforced for new members or kind of went over again, you know, who we are and how we got here. And you think about that, we spent a lot of time when we first accepted policy governance, developing the policies in the first readings and the second readings, and, and made sure they were high-level documents and touched on all the areas that we wanted them to be. So I think we're very strong there. I think we've done a solid job with that.
Okay. Everybody else feel the same way, or have other additional comments? Derek?
Yeah, I, I think, I, I agree that there was some really good work done outlining our, our policies and, and starting with the, the broad, the broadest brush, which is the design of, of our policies. We haven't gotten into modifying those policies very much and, and teasing out areas of more specificity to address questions or concerns that arise. So we have to get a little more at ease with doing that. And I don't know, I'd like to, I, I recall seeing some examples of, of other districts that have using policy governance that have, that have done a, a series of modifications to get at the, at those more detailed levels of a particular policy. And we saw some of that in our training earlier, I think. And that might be helpful to take a look at again sometime.
Okay. Greg, you have your hand up.
I think it's leftover.
Does he think he's muted?
Yeah, I think the thumbs up is old, though. I think it's leftover.
Yeah, okay.
You can move on, and Greg can unmute if he wants to speak, maybe.
Okay, the only thing I wanted to say.
That was, that, sorry, I was struggling to get, the thumbs up was a new one.
So did you want to talk, Greg, or are you all set?
No, it was just a thumbs up. That's all. Sorry.
Okay, all right, sorry about that. Okay, so I just want to respond to Derek real quick, and then Barry, I'll let you ask your question. It's, it's more of a, I don't even know if it's a question or what it is, but as far as amending our policies, I don't know that we really do much of that until we go through these exercises that we're doing to determine whether or not the policy is doing what we want it to do. So, and being that this is really the, well, as far as monitoring our own policies, the threes and the fours, we just barely started doing that this year. And as far as the executive limitations, we've seen some, but then we got caught by COVID, so. And we've already changed a couple of our policies based on what we've seen in monitoring reports from Jean. So I think as we continue to go over our monitoring reports every month or so, I think you're going to see us wanting to potentially change what we have as our policy and, and so that we can have better information. That's all I wanted to say. Barry, go ahead.
Well, also, comment to Derek's. I, I agree, Derek. I think it's good that we continue to work the policies. But I personally appreciate them being at high level. I think high-level policies allow for us to be interpretive with them. And as I look at this document here, item number two says, "Create and maintain written governing policies that realistically address the broadest levels of all organizational decisions and situations." And I'm not sure there, whether broadest levels means highest levels. To me, it does. And specificity there, I, I think kind of pigeonholes you on a lot of things. And, and I think that they should be at a, at a, at the appropriate level that allows for interpretation.
Well taken. Thank you.
Angela, you had a question?
I do think, though, that there's many things that we've already talked about in the last couple of meetings that we would like to start measuring and monitoring and, and get an eye on how the district's doing. And to be able to do that, we kind of have to, we have to look at all these individually as the process allows. But I think I would make a note that, like, at the end, if we can just go back through our hit list to say, you know, I know, I think we made kind of a brainstorm last meeting or the meeting before about kind of what our concerns were or what our areas of, of of looking further into. Just make sure those were, were taken care of when we did our reviews. Yeah, that's all I had.
Thanks, Angela. Any other comments or questions about this one? I wrote down that our written evidence is our policies, that we, Derek's comment that we are a policy governance board, and that we go over our policies again and again when necessary, and that these policies are high level. I do just need someone to tell me whether we always do this, most of the time, some of the time, rarely, or never.
Most?
Most of the time? Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, I think most of the time.
Okay, thank you. The third one is, "Be familiar with all required policies in effect."
I, I think that's hard to do. Keep all of it in my head at the same time. There's a lot there, and it's in the broadest format possible, and I think that's a good goal, is to stay on top of what it all is, and I'm still learning about what, what certain policies really mean.
Okay, so I wrote, hard to do, still working on it. It's a, it's a goal.
And this process is what gets you there, going over them and doing your own monitoring reports or having me do monitoring reports.
So do we want to say some of the time for this one?
Well, it's an ongoing activity.
Next one down?
The next one down would be rarely, and I hate to say that.
So, yeah, sometimes it sounds good to me.
I, I think, but right now it's some of the time. As we go through this more and more, you know, next time we do this policy, it might be most of the time. I'm not sure. We'll see.
And I think that collectively, we're at least good at it some of the time. I mean, we're, we're doing pretty well if we put our minds together as a board. We, we've got a familiarity, so.
True. Number four, "Gain assurance of successful organizational performance on ends and executive limitations." So I think we got some of that tonight, if I'm not mistaken. We actually got a report out on how our students are doing, right? Which, isn't that part of our ends?
Yes, that was.
I would say sometimes on that, just because of COVID and everything else that's taken precedence. They haven't had a lot of it.
Okay, yep. Well, and we are getting back into looking at all of our policies and getting our executive limitations reports from Jean. So I think, I think some of the time makes sense if everyone else agrees with that. And I think we're, we're starting to get the information that we've kind of always wanted, which is to know how our students are doing and, and where we want to go from here. If you don't agree with me, you can yell at me. Okay. Number five, "Advocate for legislative change which positively impacts public education." So I can say that Bill did this for us, and we all approved it when we gave that, what was it called? Resolution to the HBA.
Which passed, right, Angela?
Yep, ma'am.
Unanimously.
What was that?
I think you said unanimously.
Yes, unanimously. And I'd also add to Laurie's comment that Jean is very involved in the state and what's going on. And she is a very good advocate for us and does a very good job at kicking some butt when needed.
Thank you.
All right, I'm right in kicking butt down there. All right.
So what is that, I would say mostly on that one?
Is that what everybody else thinks? Okay.
Yeah, we didn't get a new governor, so.
No, we did not. All right, "Determine the expenditure of surplus funds." We do that all the time. Well, we do it once a year.
Yeah, it's kind of a yes or no. Do you or don't you?
Right. So I think we always do that, and we always.
And I think we do a good job of it, and I think we get good guidance from Brenda. And usually, there's a lot of logic to our decisions, so I'm, I'm pretty proud of how we manage that.
Good info from Brenda. Always in June.
Yeah, I would say this is one of the things we do probably the best of, so.
We do this, yep, we do this the best. All right.
Got a new, got a new Outer Valley entrance.
Yes, we do. It's beautiful.
Say a new beautiful entrance.
Not, not that you can use it on Zoom meetings, but still.
That's all right. I still like the fact that the office is locked, but if you hit the door, the handicap door, it'll.
I recorded that, Laurie.
I know. I just, I thought that was funny that I was the one who found that out. Okay, anyway, "Determine the expenditure of long-term reserves." I think this is another one that we do really well. This is our reserve fund stuff. We only have two reserve funds, which is Uh, we only have two reserve funds, which is, um, uh, trying to think, our, um-
After capital, yeah, after-school and capital.
And capital expenditures. I think we can just say ditto for number six, because again, it's always good information from Brenda. It's always, you know, in great form, here's all the stuff that we need to do, this is the priority. Um, and I think it-
Hey Lori, have we exhausted the, the small schools?
Um, not all of them, I think there's still some money in, in one or two of them. I'd have to look at a report, but we're getting close to having exhausted all the stuff in the little schools.
You'll be getting an update on that in the budget process.
Yeah, and there's still money in Goshen, because I don't think we know how to spend that.
Maybe Bill can help you spend that.
There is money in Goshen, Bill.
I don't know if we build them a shack up there or something, and use it that, I don't know. Um, alright, so last one, in addition, the board has taken on the following non-governing outputs. Negotiating union contracts and conducting fair hearings in its role as a quasi-judicial board. So, I would like to say always to this, because I think, um, we have a really great negotiating that does really good with, um, negotiating contracts, especially in the last couple of years with our teachers and our parents and bus drivers. Um, as far as our fair hearings and our role as a quasi-judicial board, we haven't, we have one, maybe? Jean?
I can't remember the last Otter Valley one that came forward, RNESU had one or two.
Yeah, okay, so maybe OV hasn't had one.
Yeah.
Number two.
In fact, the last one I can think of at OV, Kevin Thornton was on the board last time.
Oh, okay. So I'm going to say always to that one, unless you guys want me to put something different.
Oh, I'm wondering if, um, if it's not really always, because we don't have a board member sitting on that, those teams. Um, and that, that-
We don't have a board member anymore, oh, because John got off?
Right, you did until, until this-
I'm not sure we cannot, we can really say always, because we have, we have a board member actually supporting the negotiation team.
Alright.
Nothing that says you have to, by the way, have a board member on it. Um, if the board's involved in the negotiations, which you are, there's nothing that says you have to actually have a member there, so, you can decide, I just thought I'd point that out.
No, I was, I was just taking it where, the way it was written, um, I, I understood it that way, but, um, yeah, that's fine, then.
Alright, so am I doing most of the time?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Alright, so the last one is following, um, what specific actions could we take to continually improve our application of this policy? And I think we hit the most of it, is just getting out, um, tell me if I'm wrong, but, based on all of our answers to the questions that we had here, um, it's really just, um, filling in the gaps with our communications to our stakeholders.
I also heard Angela, um, and kind of Derek suggesting that, I don't know how to word it, that you, the board pay close attention to when you wish to refine a policy.
Okay.
Yeah, just pay, uh, close attention to what we have for our brainstorming that meeting, and we're sure that we're covering all those, um,
What meeting was that, Angela?
Um, that was the one with, I think Kristen was there, wasn't it, the one that we were in person?
Okay.
And we had a bunch of things that, for the equity and how we wanted to, to do that.
Those minutes are in your packet tonight, so.
Okay.
Okay, and so now we have to answer these questions. Which areas were rated as some of the time rarely or never, so some of the time, again, was our communications. Everything else was, um, oh, and the other one was, uh, being familiar with our policies. Policy and communication gap. So, it's asking us to pick one of these areas, uh, for improvement over the next year. And I think we already talked about doing the communication piece. Right, Jane?
I'd rather policy, but I think our, um, getting better with policies is more important than communication at the moment, but that's my opinion.
Well, I think we're going to get better with our policies as we continue to do these monitoring reports, would you agree?
I can only hope.
Well, so I think if we were to pick one that, to really focus on, we probably want to pick the communication piece, um, because then we can kind, it's, this is asking what actions will we commit to taking in the next year to improve our application of this policy? So, I mean, we can also commit to the, um, the policies that we're going to continue to monitor them and make sure that they are doing what we want them to do. And we're going to do some, um, pu, uh, board work around communication, probably in February. Um, who will be accountable for the leadership to ensure it happens? Angela?
Huh? I, I kind of went deaf there.
Yeah, no, I thought you did, no, that's alright, I will, um, anybody can be accountable, but I will make sure it's on our agenda for February. Um, and as far as the policies, I think we're all accountable for that as a board. And when will we reassess our progress? You got any ideas?
Well, you'll put it back on your work plan in a year, ideally.
Okay.
Now, if we have a, a session during one of our off weeks on that, coming out of that session, we might have a better feel for when we might want to reevaluate our progress.
Okay, so I'm saying in one year or after our board communications session. Is that okay? Alright, perfect, thank you for, um, bearing with me through that. Anything else in regards to our 4.2 monitoring report? Uh, Kevin, do you have your hand up?
Yeah.
Okay.
Want to point out that, once again, we spent the better part of an hour discussing our own process. Uh, no apparent end, uh, in my opinion. And, uh, it seems like an onerous to exercise to me.
Okay, how does it, um, Barbara, do you have something to say? Barbara?
I do.
Kind of.
Okay, Barb, you go.
I don't know, I just, you know, I noticed that you were gone, Kevin, I don't think you-
Oh, no, I wasn't, my camera was off, but I wasn't gone.
Okay, we've been asked to keep our cameras on, so I didn't know you were there or not.
Well, there are three people with cameras off, including the chair right now, so.
Two of them don't have cameras that work, and they sit at the top of the meeting.
That, that's okay, alright, we're not going to worry about cameras at this point. Um, what we are talking about is, he may have a point. So, the question is, is how does everybody else feel about that? Barry, you had your hand raised.
I also had my hand raised.
Well, right, I thought you were done, I apologize, do you have, if you have something else to say?
No, I got interrupted, I got interrupted by two different people. So, um, yeah, I feel this is important work, Kevin has made it amply clear that he despises this process. And I wonder if this is going to continually be a source of aggravation, or if we can get past the fact that you don't like it, and we can just accept that this is our governing policy, and how we do things, and get you on board to take part in it, because it's what you signed on for. It's how we govern this board.
Barry?
Yeah, I apologize, Barb, I didn't mean to interrupt you, I thought you were finished. Um, I personally found this to be a really good meeting for myself, um, because I'm a continuous improvement guy. Um, any board I've ever been on, it's always about continuous improvement, you need to define, you know, who you are, and what you aim to improve. But I thought today's focus, whether it be internal or not, was a focus around continuous improvement. Um, I think the board as a whole, and I, I tried to kind of allude to this, um, has a lot to gain by working together, um, coming out with unified or collective ideas. Um, and I think this, this particular meeting, in looking at our roles and our expectations, um, was a good exercise in trying to see where, where we're good at that, where we're not good at that, where we can have improvement. So, I appreciate the meeting.
Thanks, Barry, Angela?
Uh, thanks, Barry, um, I just wanted to say that I, um, I really want to, as a board, as a complete unit, keep from, um, pointing people out, and keep it generalized, and, um, not attacking people for having, having something said in a meeting. Um, everybody has a right to, to make their judgments and make their comments, and everybody has a right to, um, view their, uh, opinions, but let's try and keep it from being personalized to cer, to specific people.
Fair enough, you raise a good point. Okay.
Bill, Bill has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I couldn't see him, go ahead, Bill.
I, since I'm fairly new to the board, or it seems that way, um, I come in with some observations to the effect that we spend a lot of time talking about non-substantive matters. We, and I think we need to get into things more deeply, and, and a better grasp of it. I would also, uh, point out that the remarks about the things that we say about each other in the meeting should be a little bit more careful.
Okay. So when you say substantive, um, Bill, are you, um, do you feel that when we talk about something, we're only grazing the surface? Or, and that we're not digging deeper? Or do you feel that the topics that we're discussing aren't ones that we should be digging deeper into?
Digging deeper.
Digging deeper, okay.
I second his opinion.
Um, and, well, so if you feel that way when we're talking about something, please stop us and make sure that we continue to do that. Or that, if you feel we should dig deeper into something, bring it up so that the whole board can talk about it. And that goes for everybody. So.
Greg's-
What?
Greg's hand is up.
Yep, go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, so, um, I, I sort of agree with what Bill and what Kevin was saying, but I also agree with what Barry was saying, I know it sounds contradictory. But, um, I, uh, I, I, I do feel like this meeting's been pretty productive, and I think self-reflection's important. But I also kind of really feel what Kevin was saying, and, and, you know, it, it's a, it's a balance, so I'm kind of glad we have all these voices, because it keeps us in line, um, and keeps us focused, and hopefully we can dig deeper like Bill is saying, but, um, yeah, so, I, I, I see all these points of view, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Barbara?
I just want to apologize. I just want to apologize, Kevin. Speaking too strongly, I apologize.
Okay. Okay, so, um, yeah, so as far as the substantive meetings and digging deeper, Bill, or anybody else for that matter, um, if you want to dig deeper into something, you know, when we're in the heat of it, let, let's continue, if, especially if it makes sense for the whole board to do so. Um, as far as spending a lot of time on the monitoring reports, um, I think it's good for us to know what we're doing well, and what we're not doing well, and, um, and sometimes it feels like we're not talking about the things we should, but we did have a really good conversation with Kristen Hubert, um, that we had only planned to have 15 minutes, and I gave it a good 45 minutes, so that everybody's, um, questions could be heard, and those are about our kids, and about how well they're doing in those three common areas, and I think that's also important. So, because it is 7:49, um, I'm going to put, uh, the governance process policy 2.8.11, which we were going to consider changing the amount of the gifts, we are going to postpone that to our, um, December, our first December meeting. Um, I, we just won't have enough time to discuss it tonight in length. Um, but our next piece is our board member recruitment. Um, open board seats that are coming up, uh, and terms that are up for election in March. One of them is Nikki's, uh, board seat that she has vacated, that will be, that we need to fill, um, and I will pick out people whose terms are up, but you know who you are, and-
I have that Lori, if you want it, basically if your name, first or last name starts with a B, except Bonnie Chmuleski, you're up.
Oh, wow.
Pretty much, Barry, Barry, Bill, Bonnie Bourne, Becky.
Greg Bernhardt.
Greg, and Becky, if you want to go with Rebecca, it's still Bertrand, so you're still a B. Uh, Greg Bernhardt, um, yep, and then Nikki, who, Nikki Bear, which is still a B. So, Bonnie C, you're the only one off, and Lori B, I guess you're not on.
No, um, and Bonnie Bourne has also indicated that she is not, also not running for reelection this year, so, this is her final year, so we have at least two board seats to fill, if not more, if, if any of the rest of you who are up are thinking about, um, vacating, which I hope you're not, but if you are, um, we need to start thinking about recruitment. So, at this point, I'm going to pass this over to the superintendent's informational report, um, to, and then we'll end the meeting.
So I gave you a lot of information in writing, and I, as usual, I, I don't want to go over all of it. Um, any, what's, you know, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask. Um, we do have updated, um, guidance from the Agency of Education on how to safely run the schools, and we're in the process of making any needed modifications there, the biggest modification helped us bring more kids in, because it reduced the distance, physical distancing for kindergarten to sixth graders to between three and six feet, and that was very helpful. Sports guidance also just came out, um, and, you know, I, I, I will honestly say that I'm struggling with the sports guidance that allows us to have basketball when we can't have music. Um, so I'm struggling with that, uh, but we're, we're going to follow the guidance and figure out how we can, how we can do this safely. Biggest thing in the sports guidance is, I think one of the biggest things is that there will be no spectators allowed for indoor sports. Um, also, our buildings are still closed to the community, so there will not be rec programs in the buildings at, while we're still under, in this pandemic, still under this, um, conditions. Um, and we do have approximately 10% of our elementary students, and approximately 23% of our Otter Valley students who are in remote learning. And, um, generally, I mean, I, I, I think it's going pretty well, there's still, there's still bugs to work out, the, the biggest challenge that I see facing us right now is, um, the internet at Otter Valley. It's just had, for the la, it, it's, it's, it's not been good. We've actually ordered an entirely new wifi system that we're putting in next week. But it's not just the wifi, it's also the server, the LAN, I, it's just intermittent problems. Right now, we're down to three classrooms that is, that are still having difficulty, so we're working through that. Um, the upcoming issue that I see is, um, travel by either students or employees over the holidays, and the impact, um, that that can have on our ability to have in-person learning, um, through mid-January. At the moment, we don't plan. learning, um, through mid-January. At the moment, we don't plan on closing down at all. Um, numbers in the state, though, are increasing. If students travel, they need to switch to remote learning while they quarantine. But if employees travel, that also needs to happen. And if we don't have enough subs, like yesterday, we did not have enough subs at the high school. So if we don't have enough subs, we may be closing down a classroom here or there. Um, you can do that at the elementary schools. At the high school, it's gotta be, you can't have kids not have one teacher in and have other three teachers in, so it would be a school shutdown. So we're going to try not to do that. And I'm just trying to remind people of, you know, their responsibility, um, really to the entire community. And we'll do the best we can, but I think that's gonna be a challenge coming up. Angela?
Is our, um, internet issues all hardware-based in Otter Valley, or is it service? And is there anything we can do for Comcast to boost up service?
We've been working with our vendors. We've already boosted up our service. It's, it's not the, it's not that. We've, we've already taken steps over the last month to, uh, boost up our, our service in all of our schools. So I guess maybe it is hardware-based, not, not at the computer level, but at the, at the server, at the equipment. We've worked with our vendors. Vendors had difficulty defining it, so we actually just went out and purchased a new, a new system that we're going to install. But that's only part of it. It's, it's also, it seems to be, one theory is because Otter Valley is our hub. So there's things coming in and going out and maybe, you know, we don't know, but we're, we're working through it. Um, it is very disruptive. Um, it is very disruptive to the learning if we can't get our internet stable. And right here in Route 7, should, we should be able to do that. So, um, like I said, we're, we're pulling out all stops and researching everything, working with vendors, purchasing new equipment, et cetera.
Have we talked to our legislators at all about this issue?
Not about this issue because I don't really think it's a legislative issue. There's something happening in our system.
Okay, because I was thinking about, you know, if the rest of us are having issues with internet at home and all of that, if that, if it's not something to do with living in Vermont.
Sometimes, but I don't think this is that.
Okay.
We need fiber optic all through Vermont.
Well, I, I agree with you, Angela. Becky?
My question is around the COVID stuff. If, um, teachers travel and need to quarantine, they're then using their own sick days and personal days?
This is complicated. Um, yes and no.
The reason I asked.
Actually, it's no and yes.
Because it's a choice.
Yeah, but the answer is no and yes.
So if you get. Okay, I just feel like, um, you know, if you're exposed and you're here, that's, that, that feels like a, you know, the COVID relief sort of days, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to be harsh, but I feel like if somebody leaves by choice to go someplace, that's, that just feels different. And.
So the, the way, the way it, it works is, um, first of all, we have to assess who the person is regardless of why they're in quarantine, regardless. Um, we assess whether or not their job responsibilities are something that can be done remotely. If they can be done remotely, then, um, there isn't a need to take a leave, but that can impact kids' learning in the sense that kids also may end up needing to go remote, which could impact families if the teacher is remote. Um, if, if their position, if their job responsibilities cannot be done remotely, and we have a pretty good handle of that now across the district, generally speaking, a teacher can um, go rem, teach remotely, but a para educator or food service provider, custodian, bus driver cannot work remotely, generally speaking. Those are, those need to be in person. Then there, through December, there is a federal act, FF-CRA, that actually says that they get up to a one-time access to up to 80 hours of leave that we pay for. And after that, it would be their sick time or personal time. The, there are some districts having discussions about, you know, should we tell our staff they can't travel? I, I don't really think that's a legal thing to do. Um, so I'm just trying to, and, and there may be reasons, you know, I, I, I don't want to become the travel police that decides you have a good reason and you don't. I mean, it's, you know, it, it, you, you don't really know what's going on in somebody's personal life, their family life, the, you just don't know.
Yeah, I agree with, I agree with that.
Yeah.
I guess I'm just, I, I work for a place, right? So, well, everybody does right now, but, you know, i- if you are leaving, I don't know, I, I know we can't, um, and I don't want to police who leaves and where, but I just feel like yeah, if you're, if, again, I don't know how you do this, but if you leave for an emergency thing, like your mom's dying versus I just want to go to Thanksgiving because I want to go and using, I, I don't know, I just feel like people should be more accountable, I guess.
Yeah.
And I don't, I don't know how to do that, but I was just asking.
I don't either. But if people are using their sick time, their sick time does run out.
Right.
In a sense, you know.
But that was my question is, yeah, but my question is like, are they using their sick time though? Because if they're using the FF.
CRA.
Time, that's not really sick time.
You only get to use that once.
Right, okay.
And if you only use 40 hours of it, you don't get another bite at the apple. It's only a one-time thing.
Okay.
And I think it expires currently on December 31st anyway. But yeah, I, I hear you. It's, it's a difficult thing. Um, Mike?
Yeah, I just had a question in regards to like with Thanksgiving and, you know, the holidays that are coming up. I mean, how are we quantifying that with people who are going away? I mean, do we know? Do we have an idea?
We're gonna ask people, um, next week, we're gonna ask people to talk with their supervisor if they're planning to do that, so we can get a handle in advance of what we need, um, for subs. And so, you know, that, that may, so that I can give as much advance notice as it's possible to, to parents. Um, you know, one of the difficult things earlier in the fall was that we were surrounded by a lot of green areas that turned yellow after people got there, or turned red after people got there. And, and the state, the Vermont's rules say if, if it was green when you left the state, you don't have to worry about it changing. Well, now we're surrounded pretty much entirely by red and yellow. I mean, the very second I drove across the state line, I was in yellow approaching red. So, um, it's pretty much if you're traveling anywhere.
Well, and I, I also think of the case for families that are hosting.
That's right.
People will be coming from the Boston areas and, you know, I mean, I look it over, I mean, like you said, Warren County, Washington County, they're red zones.
Yep. And that one's a little bit tougher. Again, I'm, I'm sharing with, um, families and employees the, uh, essential, I mean, the quarantine guidelines from the state of Vermont, um, but that's a little bit tougher to manage when you're, when you're the host. It's, it's concerning to me. I think that we will see a spike in numbers. I absolutely do. And I think that, um, if the state continues to spike, I think there's a chance that we end up back up in phase one with everybody remote. It's a challenge every day, each of these things that come up. It would really help if we had solid internet, but guess we didn't have, put this much stress on the internet before. The Chromebook deployment is going well. Um, there's still 100 Otter Valley students who haven't picked one up, but they can. Um, the front entrance is beautiful. That Otter Valley really is. So any other questions on anything else in the report?
I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like our next board meeting is set for Wednesday, November 18th at 6 o'clock. Um, at this time, I think it's gonna be in person. So I'd really like to get back to that unless something tells us that we're not gonna be able to do that. Um, and if you don't feel comfortable, I completely understand.
Lori, are you saying November 18th is in person?
Yep.
Okay, that, that's a big if, but okay, because the numbers are going up. So plan on in-person and, and.
Right, well, that, but I would like to get back to in-person if at all possible. So at this point, plan on in-person. If for some reason that doesn't work out, we'll let you know. Um, everyone should have gotten a board meeting self-evaluation in their email, because there was one in mine already. Um.
Just moments ago.
Is there anything else we need to talk about, uh, before we adjourn?
Lori?
Yes.
You have a location?
Uh, Otter Valley, in the Large Calf.
Yeah.
Okay, not hearing any. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn at 8:04.
So moved.
Thank you.
All right, good night, everyone.